Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the Sherborne School Committee meeting to order. Today is October 15th, 2024, and we are meeting in the lovely Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:31. With us today, we have our school committee members, Kristin Aberle, Becca Hammond, Megha Kadiala, and myself, Christine Walsh, and we are going to dive into community comments. We have provided a Zoom link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or preferred to attend in person this evening. Are there any community comments? Anyone online?
Nope.
Okay, thank you so much. So next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. So I'd like to propose, if it's okay with you as chair, that we let the CSA co-presidents go before me?
Okay, yes, that would be lovely. So we're switching it around.
That's okay with you, and that way they can get home.
I wrote a very specific thing right here.
Except for this whole thing.
Yes. So instead of Superintendent McCoy, we are going to be shifting to our Pine Hill CSA co-presidents, Irene Santerias Basali and Karen McDermott, two incredible community leaders who have taken the helm of the Pine Hill CSA, and I'm excited to hear what they've already accomplished and their vision for this year ahead.
Irene? Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sit. Thank you for having us. I'm Karen McDermott, and this is Irene. Thank you for having us again, and we are the co-presidents for the Pine Hill CSA this year. This is an exciting year because we are having a changing of the guard. We, last year, had a great year for the CSA, but we also said goodbye to our longtime principal, Dr. Barbara Brown, and so the CSA organized a community-wide retirement party at the end of the celebration, or end-of-year celebration also, at Lookout Farm in Natick, and we had a great turnout. It was a little bit less than expected just because of the high school graduation rescheduling because of like impending weather, but it was a wonderful, it was a wonderful evening. And in tribute to Dr. Brown's years of service, a bench in our outdoor classroom and garden with a beautiful mosaic plaque was dedicated to her. And we're very excited to lead the CSA with Mrs. Gollingsrude in command now. And Mrs. Gollingsrude and Mrs. Jen Ryan, our assistant principal, have been really great to work with so far, so we're very excited. And this year, we plan to bolster up our teacher support and hospitality activities to ensure good staff morale throughout the school year. That was something that was very important to Mrs. Gollingsrude as well with the transition. We continue to take parental feedback from previous events, fundraisers, and communication to implement improvements and maximize our parent engagement. We hope to ask a little less of our parents this year, or throughout the year, kind of before leading up to our gala asks. Our biannual gala is going to be on May 3rd, 2025, and that is our largest source of fundraising. And so, and one of our main goals this year continues to be considering inclusion and equity across our events for parents, caregivers, and children. And we have a great board this year. We have 17 board members and 25 volunteers. We've been very fortunate to retain a majority of the members, but have welcomed 11 new parents onto the CSA. We continue to focus on recruiting new parents and caregivers with younger children who have the potential to stay on for a while. This year, we have three gala co-chairs as opposed to the usual two. And our gala team was getting organized at the end of last school year, and so they are already underway and making great strides planning out our event. And we're encouraging parents and caregivers, both new and experienced, to get more involved in events. That continues to be a focus for the CSA. All of our events, we rely heavily on volunteers. And we continue to see a bit of a reduction in caregiver involvement, which has been noted, I think, the past few years. So we continue to look for ways to maximize caregiver participation and involvement. And we continue to hold our CSA meetings at the Sherborne Library. We continue to make sure that everything is hybrid, so via Zoom and in-person, so that we can have as many attendees as possible. And we also fluctuate between a 9:00 AM kind of morning meeting and an evening meeting also to really try to capture everyone's involvement. And our members appreciate that flexibility as well. The Sherborne Library AV system has been allowing for a seamless experience for people in the room and those attending virtually. Liz Anderson, our library director, and her staff have been really helpful in just helping to ensure that we have the space that we need and that we know how to use all of their equipment. Do you want me to do OCG? And then we'll just do an outdoor classroom and garden update. Almost all of the capital expenditures regarding the OCG were completed last year. There are still a few more components that affect the long-term function of the space that will be addressed this year. And it's been fully kind of, I think we received our occupation certification of occupancy in January of 2024. So this will really be the first full school year that we'll have access to it from a curriculum standpoint, and we've already been enjoying the physical space a lot. So it's been, it's been great so far, and we're really excited to see where that goes. In the spring, the teachers assisted Julie Dreyfus, who is kind of the lead liaison from the CSA, with outfitting the space with teaching supplies and gardening tools. And then we have recently, just this fall, are kicking off use of the Learning Lab with our seed germination experiments in first and fourth grade. X-Day uses the space daily, and teachers had a lunch in there early in the school year. And we continue to use the space for outdoor gatherings. It's really lovely.
Absolutely, perfect. So I think the CSA is a well-oiled machine. I think you'd all agree with that. So we've, as you all know, we had our 5K already on September 22nd. It's a beloved event, and we had 330 participants this past year. And our new mascot and now town celebrity, Piny, made their debut at the 5K to an adoring crowd. Unfortunately, I missed it because I was at a water station.
Kids are losing their minds with this. It's very exciting.
While we continue to focus on working with local businesses for fundraising activities, we do have two exciting online initiatives starting in the next couple of months. The first one is, we have a three-month-long initiative with Dave &amp; Buster's, where $10 of each $20 Power Game Card purchased will go to the CSA. So it's a very good deal for us. And also, we have another good deal with Minted, the online retailer card stationery maker. Those who use our code will receive 20% off, and the CSA will receive 15% of the proceeds. We hope to benefit from the ever-popular family holiday card purchases. This coming Friday, we have our Harvest Halloween Fest on Friday evening. This event replaces the previous Monster Mash, and it's our second Harvest Halloween Fest. The plan is to hold it outside with a DJ, costume parade, food trucks, and face painting. We continue to reiterate that this is not a drop-off event for our families because we've learned from that, and we plan to have an allergy-friendly snack table. Yeah, so looking forward to it. Our ticket sales are still going.
Yeah. I think everybody with outdoors waits till the last minute to know if it's worth it or not.
And for our upcoming events, our Community Outreach Corneaders are going to start sharing information with the community about our holiday giving program. In the past, we've collected gifts for Family Shelter and also for DCF. I'm not sure if those are the agencies that we're going to be working with again. On December 4th, we just learned, we're going to be hosting, the CSA will be hosting a Books and Bubbles event at ASOP's bookstore in Holliston. This is the second year for this event, and I think they're still ironing the details, but ASOP has agreed to give us 20% back on books purchased. They will have an online purchasing option for families that cannot attend the event. And then coming up in February, we are expecting to have a fundraising event that's called Glow Up with Your Grown-Up. We held it last year for the first time, and it was very popular. And also, we're excited to have our third annual International Night on February 28th, thanks to tremendous support from the community and from administration, honestly. It's been a well-received event. And if anyone caught the 350th parade, which was not me, I did not see the parade, but there was a small and enthusiastic contingent representing our International Night families. In March, we will have, we will continue to have this event, One Book for Every Child Book Fair in March, and this was a new twist to our book fair from last, that happens every year. It will coincide with the National Reading Month and the Spring Parent Teacher Conferences. Each child gets to choose and take home a book during their scheduled class time. Additional books can be purchased by family members that day for their children and our teachers. And to support this year's book fair, where every child will get to choose one book to take home, and no money will be accepted during the school day, we plan to use residual funds from last year's successful book fair, where funds were explicitly raised for the event, and additional funds raised from the potential Holiday Books and Bubbles event. That's a long sentence. So we have the funds to support the One Book for Every Child event. We will have funds, sorry about the long sentence. So thank you for having Karen and me here today. We appreciate having the time to share our efforts on, we have the CSA. We're happy to answer questions today or after today.
And thank you for everything you guys do.
Yeah, of course, absolutely. Questions?
I just want to say thank you. As a former Pine Hill parent and as a current educator, I really appreciate all that you do for our Pine Hill students, both with enrichment, the outdoor learning lab, the activities, but also the fact that you keep all of our students in mind and you have that equity piece to make sure that every child has a book, every child has access to the events regardless of price, but also the larger community with the fundraising and the gift-giving that you do. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both so much. Now to our superintendent's comments, if you're open to it, Beth?
Hi, sure. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. I was just going to provide a couple of updates about things happening since the last time that we met, and then some current updates on my goals. So thanks to Ms. Gollingsrude and Ms. Ryan and all of our educators. We had a successful open house night. I wasn't able to be there because Chickering had theirs at the same time, so it was my off year. But I heard wonderful things. The math curriculum presentation I heard went very well, and I think parents enjoyed the opportunity to get to know their teachers in person and then have the information sent home afterwards. We had an arts homecoming event. This is a biannual event. It happens every other year, where alumni of Dover Sherborne schools who are interested in the arts either as a full-time job or continue to have a passion in the arts in addition to a job come back, and they spend time in all four of our schools. So they attended all school meeting at Pine Hill. They went into different classrooms in the elementary school and then came up here and spent some time in different classes in the middle and high school. Then at the end of the day, they all gather in the high school library, and students who are interested in asking them questions and getting to know more about their experience here in Dover Sherborne or after Dover Sherborne come down and ask questions. And I really love it because there are so many opportunities throughout the year for students, especially at the high school, to, you know, interact with community members and parents and alumni who are in math and science and journalism. This is an opportunity to really stop and focus on the arts, which, you know, is an elective at the high school, and just to really show that it's important, and for those who are passionate about it, that there are opportunities out there after DS, and that no matter what, it's important to keep your passions, whether it's the arts or something else, you know, as part of your balanced self moving forward. So I think I have a picture, actually. Let's see. We had, yes, we had 19 alum come back. So great day, and they'll be back hopefully again in two years. Denny and I and Monique Marshall-Beal, our Medco Director, attended the Medco Retreat two Fridays ago. It was at Gillette Stadium in their beautiful open space. And it was an opportunity for superintendents and district leaders to come together from all of the Medco districts and talk about the vision of Medco 2.0, which we went over a little bit last year, and just making sure that our strategic plans are aligned with the vision of Medco and the agreements that we have across all districts. I will say that it was an honor to have our two family and friend liaisons from Dover Sherborne present on a panel. So that's Kate Potter and Myla Clark, who do a lot of work organizing our early release days and our activities across Dover Sherborne and Boston. So it was a panel of superintendents, directors of DEI, Medco directors, and Kate and Myla who presented on behalf of Dover Sherborne, and their angle was talking about the work that they do to bring families together. And afterwards, anybody there had an opportunity to break up into small groups and ask questions, and they were very popular. People had lots of questions about the work that they're doing. So I think that says a lot about our community and willingness and eagerness to build bridges with our Boston families. Legal updates. So every fall, we invite our attorneys to come and provide us with updates to the leadership team. You know, any general updates or court cases that we need to know about in the world of education. There's a book, if you'd like one, that might affect the work that we do, but we specifically asked them this year to really go over soup to nuts, the bullying laws and expectations and regulations, as well as Title IX, because they continue to grow and change. So we've had that work, and we continue to refine our processes and protocols to make sure that we're doing everything to make sure that students are safe. Student safety. Again, we bring our district-wide emergency preparedness team together officially twice a year and more as needed. So that's all of our building leaders, our district leaders, and our two chiefs of police. And we debrief the drills that we do in the fall, whether it's the fire drills, bus evacuation drills, lockdown drills, shelter-in-place drills, talk about things that are happening in the field and what we can learn from them, and discuss any sort of upgrades or tweaks that we need to do to make sure that all four of our buildings are safe. What's nice this year is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, which I belong to, has heard a cry from superintendents that we were getting lost in manuals of information and pleas for purchasing and different products, that we didn't go to school for safety. And so, you know, trying to find our way through all of that was really difficult. And so they are providing us access as a group to many experts in the field. So I just had a webinar today with people from the FBI and Homeland Security who have boiled all of the information down to four lovely packets that are manageable and readable and understandable to people in education. And I'm just so grateful that they did that for us because it really says what our best practice is and what works, that we're not spending our time doing drills and buying products that aren't going to be helpful to us.
And Beth, were there, were there takeaways of things we should be changing urgently or more optimizations as we move forward?
Exactly, yeah. So we're making small tweaks right now. So for example, we are, we have our door lock system, and then we have our notification system that goes to 911 and the police department and all phones and computers of the adults in the buildings, and then the beacons. They're on four different systems right now, and we're combining them so that it's just one button, and when one thing goes off, they all go off at the same time to reduce human error in that situation. We have doors between classrooms. So obviously, every classroom door opens up into the hall bay, but sometimes they share a door between them. And those doors don't often have locks, so we're installing locks on those as well. So making small tweaks, but generally speaking, we're in really good shape.
Great, thank you.
Good question. And lastly, on general updates, we are working on our MTEST analysis with our building principals and our PLC leaders. So we will have some updates for you in November to talk about just general trends as how we did at Pine Hill School, things that are going well, areas in the curriculum where we might need to tweak, and perhaps subgroups of students that we could be helping differently or better. So that'll be next month. So there's our alum, and there are Kate and Myla on the board. It's a very, very exciting, very proud moment for Dover Sherborne. And then just a couple of updates on the district goals and my goals around best practices. So as you know, we have our nine best practices that increase student engagement, which we know increases academic achievement, social, emotional well-being, and deeper learning. So we have identified the core indicators. So under the best practice of voice or the best practice of relevance, what are we looking for in a classroom? What is the teacher doing in those circumstances? What is the student doing in those circumstances? And what are the activities and tasks look like in those circumstances? So that's really helping us calibrate our observations as evaluators, helping teachers really understand what it is that we're looking for and so that they can work on areas that they're interested in. We're also calibrating observation write-ups. So we have a leadership team meeting every two weeks with all the building principals and evaluators. And so we come together and we share observations just to see that we're making sure that we're recognizing all the amazing things that our educators do, but also finding ways to give constructive feedback so that it continues to grow and learn. Sorry, too many pieces of technology here. Student voice, which I think is my favorite goal at this point. As you know, our leadership team and our instructional leaders worked with students this summer to analyze the challenge success data, and now educators across the schools have looked at it, more so at the middle and high school because it's a seven-through or six-through-12 survey. But we are recruiting students for our superintendent advisory council. We're hoping for roughly 24. We have 21 that have expressed interest from the middle and high school. In terms of Pine Hill and Chickering, we're looking to work with the student council and do some lunch bunches with additional students who are interested. We think the work will be a little bit different, but their voice is just as important in terms of what's going well, and they'd like to see Pine Hill and Dover Sherborne go. We're also enlisting students to host a shadow for our day, which is so exciting. Deb Reinemann and Allison Gollingsrude are helping us at the elementary level. It looks a little bit different there because when you shadow a student, you're in the same classroom all day. So it's really that you're shadowing the class, right? And then going to electives as necessary. So we have a lot of our PLC leaders interested in either staying in their own building and shadowing a student for the entire day or going to the opposite elementary school to get that experience. So Deb and Allison are arranging that, and Denny and I are working on the middle and high school students. We have 70 middle and high school students who volunteered to be shadowed. They don't mind an adult pulling them around for the day. And so the first one is on Thursday, I'll be shadowing a 10th grade student, and Denny is next Tuesday with a middle school student. So we're the first to kind of go through it, to work out the kinks, and then we have lots of spreadsheets and things that are going and sign-ups. But it's, I think, going to be a really powerful experience for us to remember what it's like to walk through six periods or seven periods in a day, to have that feeling of how much homework do I have, but also to empower students to know that we care. We want to know what their experience is like, and we want to get to know them as people and to see what their world is all about in the year 2024, which is a lot different than when we went to school. And then lastly, we met with the Challenge Success Board last week, and we're going to be launching the I Wish campaign. And so there is a video out there created by Challenge Success already that talks about what it is. It's a short video, and it's an opportunity for students to either write on paper or enter into a form anonymously. I wish my parents knew, you know, how much I love piano or how hard I work. I wish my teachers knew how much I hate math or think that I'm not great at math yet. And then we can look for trends, which can then formulate what we do as a school district in terms of internal initiatives, but also the professional development and education that we provide for our parents. So a more anonymous way of getting student voice.
Is that across all three, four schools?
Yeah, yeah. So that's exciting. Streamlined communication, lots of conversation continues around Parent Square, and we continue to refine and tweak it. And if there's ways that we can help you, please reach out to Brandon Hall or let your principal know so that we can continue to support you. We provide ongoing in-person support at the open houses. We have virtual support available, and also some videos and emails that have gone out. Parent leaders, so I believe our CSA folks, have you gotten access to Parent Square?
Yes, our comms team has. And they're sending newsletters for two or three weeks now, and they're sending newsletters. Christine's on the comms team, that's why I pointed her.
Okay, Christine, you're a parent square expert now. You can post.
I saw the YouTube videos, and I'm ready to go.
So it's exciting, another opportunity again to move everybody to the same platform where all of the information is going. So I hope people are looking at that positively. And just last week, I can't believe, last week seemed like yesterday, I attended a Writing for Busy workshops, workshop, Busy Readers Workshop. And it was an opportunity to work with a communication expert at Harvard who's done lots of studies on how you get people's attention and how you get them to either respond or do surveys. And he had lots of tips for superintendents on how to be respectful of the reader and their time and how to be respectful of your time as a writer, and using subtitles and bullets and colors and those sorts of things. So I'm excited to share the slides with the leadership team, and even some of my most recent posts have changed just because of that one PD. I think it was great. But the neatest thing that I learned, I believe they use in the military with a bluff, B-L-U-F, bottom line up front.
That's my favorite.
Yes, so even though it seems curt, but your first line is, "I'm writing to you today about this." So then you capture their attention if it's something of interest to them, and they keep reading as opposed to, you know, "I hope you're enjoying the wonderful fall weather." So more to come on that.
One question, I know last time we talked about the percentage of people who signed up. Are we still seeing people sign up, or have we kind of hit a plateau?
So it's hard to tell because we can see how many people, we can go into Parent Square and see how many people have downloaded the app or were accessing the app. What Parent Square doesn't show you is how many people log on to their laptops or desktops. So what was interesting, when I was at the Chickering Open House and all of the parents were gathered in the cafeteria for the opening with Dr. Reinemann, she did ask how many parents were on Parent Square, parents and caregivers, and I would say 98% of the room raised their hand. Granted, not everybody was there, but it was a full auditorium. So I think that's pretty telling, that our number is higher than the 60% or so that were, this says. 73% have the app at Pine Hill. That's great, 73, wow.
That's huge.
Yeah, fantastic.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's the newsletter that did it.
I love having the newsletter in there, just one spot.
And then my student learning goal is to, again, calibrate our observations and make sure that we're providing our educators with meaningful feedback. So Denny and I met with the high school department chairs, for example, last week. Aside from building principals and special ed directors, they're the only teacher types that provide observation feedback. So we're working with them to make sure that we're all on the same page. Educators are currently submitting their goals for the year. Mr. Conklin will talk a little bit about that. And Denny and I continue to do classroom observations in each of the buildings with our principals, calibrating what we're looking for, our feedback, and those sorts of things. And my second goal around professional practice is working with other superintendents. So as I mentioned, I was accepted to the Leading Now Program, which is superintendents from across the country that get to come together twice in person. So I was in Chicago about a month ago, and then I'll be in DC next summer, and several times online to share problems of practice that are similar and others that are different, and engage in some training about how to engage stakeholders in conversations and communicate better. When I was in Chicago, it was fascinating. I met superintendents from California and Ohio and Florida. And one of the superintendents was from a rural district in Oregon, which K through 12 had 150 students. And she was talking about how it's the first time in many of the families there that they're attending college, and so how to, you know, support students through that application process and getting them to see kind of what their options are out there. So differences, obviously, but similarities in that she's really focused on student engagement and project-based learning as a way to engage kids. So it's like, hey, you know, where's school district? 2100, and we're working on that too. So great experience. We continue to remain in contact. You know, there's their superintendents I would contact now just on the side to ask them a question and their advice, which is great. And then tomorrow, we have an official gathering of all of us online again together. Through that program, I've been assigned an expert coach, someone who went to school for coaching, and so I get to use her throughout the year with any sort of problem of practice that I'm having. So I'm eager to work with Denny to figure out which she's going to help us tackle. But it's nice to have an expert. And then I'm in year three of the new superintendent induction program. So I'm near the finish line, that program. Ms. John Sill is my coach, and having that time with my peers, but it's been great. And this year, we're actually engaging in the consultancy protocol, which we take turns bringing a problem of practice to the table, sharing kind of what the dilemma is or what the problem is, what we've tried was not working. And then we sit back and let everybody else kind of talk as though we're not there, and we listen to ideas and feedback of things that we might not have tried. So I think it's a great opportunity to see what other people are dealing with, learn some strategies, but also get some feedback. That's that. Mr. Conklin?
Just a few assistant superintendents' teaching learning updates. So I've been spending the first part of the year so far doing a lot of classroom visits, especially the math lessons. I've been meeting with our professional learning community leaders. So they, we have one for each grade level, then for specialists. So it's an opportunity for them to bring any teaching, learning-related concerns to the forefront or talk about ways that I can support them this year in the work that we're doing. So those meetings are happening now. We just finished our first round of data team meetings for the year, and I was able to sit in on a bunch of those at Pine Hill. I just want to say that it is remarkable what our educators and what our interventionists and what our coaches do in these meetings. They go through student by student, and they can speak directly to the student's strengths, to things that students have struggled with, and then they can come up with a plan for how we're going to provide interventions and additional classroom support. So some of it is intervention, some of it is push-in support. But I was just blown away by the expertise that we have from our educators in this district and the way that we are using data to make decisions about our students. So it was just a great reminder of the talent that we have at Pine Hill. And we are currently in the process of planning for a full day of professional development on December 2nd, so it's the Monday after Thanksgiving. So again, it's all going to be about math this year. So we're going to have an awesome speaker come in and talk to teachers about productive struggle and why productive struggle in math is something that we want. We want to see students struggle. That's how you learn, and that's how you grow. And then we're going to be breaking up into some smaller grade-level teams that day to kind of address the concerns that are catered to. to kind of address the concerns that our K-1 educators have and some of our upper grade educators have. So that is underway as well. As Superintendent McCooy mentioned, in the evaluation world, we are in goal season. So teachers submit two goals to their evaluators. One is a student learning goal, so something they're going to do to try to make an impact the way that students learn. And the second is a professional practice goal, something that they are going to do in their professional lives to make an impact in their classrooms or in their buildings. So these are just a few of our sample student learn goals from Pine Hill. In a year full of math, it's great to see our K-1 teachers that are really focusing, continuing to focus on early childhood literacy. So you can see just how specific like the kindergarten is being, talking about how they want to get students to further blend letter sounds together, working on their CBC words and digraphs. You can see that they have some very specific ways they're going to measure that growth throughout the year. First grade, looking to increase oral reading fluency and reading accuracy, measured by our DIBELS assessments. I know that parent teacher conferences are starting tomorrow. So parents and caregivers, when they're meeting teachers, they can expect to see the first DIBELS reports from teachers. And then obviously we have other goals around the new math curriculum. And then a lot of our special educators and related service providers are constructing goals around the new IEP that's rolling out, how we can give students more voice and how we can make that a more collaborative process. Some sample professional practice goals. Again, you can see implementing the new math curriculum. Some people focusing on the idea of individualization of the math curriculum by focusing on our various depth of knowledge questions. We can see another math goal that's about giving students opportunities to self-reflect through exit tickets, focusing on reflections, their math identities. And then again, you can see a sample goal from one of our special educators about just collecting more feedback from educators and families as part of the new IEP process. So all of the educators, they meet with their evaluators and they have a goals meeting where they talk through these goals, how they're going to measure and track them throughout the year. Then at the end of the year, educators submit evidence to show how they've done on these goals and have a close-up meeting with their evaluators. So it's always fun to see how the year starts out and then where we're at at the end of the year. But I feel like our educators have been very, very ambitious this year. And I've been very impressed in looking through the goals and seeing the smart aspect of them, that they are very specific and this year they're very measurable. So that's a good thing to see from the goals as well.
And Denny, I know we're only six weeks in, but how is the math curriculum going?
So far, so good. I mean, I think we all knew it was going to be a heavy lift. Again, I'm going to say that the educators are doing a phenomenal job. This is really, really hard to be implementing a new math curriculum, to be getting used. You don't really have like the knowledge that you have where, oh, well, I can, I'm going to have to shorten this part of the lesson and this I'm going to have to spend a little longer on. So I think there's some growing pains in there. We're still figuring out the best way to individualize the curriculum for all of our learners. So actually, our early release date, November 5th, we've heard from a lot of our teachers that need some help with that. So we're going to provide PD for them on that day. So we're trying to just like be in classrooms, talk to teachers, see what they need. Our math coaches at both buildings are doing a phenomenal job, providing in the moment support and planning. So so far it's going good. I think another piece that we're starting to see is now that we're into the units, the unit assessments. Students are getting used to the way that questions are worded and what is being asked of them in problems. So again, there's some growing pains with that. I was talking to one classroom teacher and the scores came out a little lower than they might have last year, but that's to be expected as everybody's getting used to the new program. So we kind of really need to fine-tune the assessments and see what's working there. But I'm feeling really good about it so far. I think this idea that all the elementary teachers are in this together is really helpful because they can kind of lean on each other. So I think that has been a nice kind of way to support and bridge between the two buildings soon.
So there's this new math club that was launched at Pine Hill. It seems to be parent-run. I wasn't sure if the administration is also involved in that and if it's related to the real math piece?
It's not related to reveal math. It was just a parent volunteer who came forward and wanted to provide Pine Hill students an opportunity to participate in the Continental Math League competitions, which runs, I think, grades two all the way through high school. And so this parent did work very closely with Ms. Gullings to make sure that it was going to be set up for success and have parent permission and pay the fees, et cetera. So they had their first gathering this afternoon. I think there's a lot of students involved.
My daughter reported that she had a great time. Seventy-six. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
It's a lot of kids.
Yeah, it is. It is a lot of students. And so I think it's going to take some time for it to really just kind of, you know, simmer down to understanding that, yes, it's an opportunity to engage in math and games and engage and, you know, collaborate with your friends and peers in games, but also there's a serious math kind of testing competition to it, which I wonder if over time will reduce the number of students that we have. We'll see.
But I mean, just it's a testament that this was something that people want, the kids want, the parents wanted. So I don't know if there's a room eventually to make it more official and not necessarily parent-run. So, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that's been a discussion, you know, even since my kids were little, around Destination Imagination 2 is how we make that official. Because that's certainly a strong program as well. So, yeah, we can continue that conversation.
Denny, would you be able to just from a very high level, kind of summarize the new IEP process and maybe how it's different from what we were using formally?
Yep, so I'll put my Kate McCarthy hat on for this. My understanding of it, and Superintendent McCooy, feel free to add in, is that they've changed a lot of the forms and the types of feedback that teachers are being asked to provide, that is more focused on data and making sure that we are showing student progress and going back to very specific data points. So because of that, that is going to require our general educators to work with our special educators more closely, to check in more frequently, to get more information. And then I think another big piece of it is as much as possible giving the student a role in these meetings, in these plans, in saying what's working, in helping to write pieces of the IEP so that student voice piece be more prominent.
Even at the elementary level?
Yes.
And then to understand the goals that are written and why they're written and how they can work on them and then tracking their progress so they know who they are as a learner and what their strengths and areas for improvement are.
Is there a concept of then different portions of the meeting or two meetings? Like, I feel like there are a lot of conversations in those meetings that might be sensitive around the kids. And I'm just curious if there's guidance on that.
So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is there's a pre-meeting between the special education liaison and the students and the parents are invited to be part of that to kind of get that voice out in a more comfortable environment. And then that's brought to the meeting by the adults.
Anything else on this? Thank you both so very much. Any other questions for Denny and Beth? Next up on the agenda, we have the financial reports. Dawn supplied us with the most recent list of warrants. I'll be heading to Town Hall on Friday to sign more. Did anyone have any questions or comments about the warrants? And then Beth, if you're open to it, could you talk a little bit about FY26 budget guidance?
Sure. So as you know, we're starting to prepare for next year's budget. And this starts with kind of the big overview and, you know, 30,000-foot view of what are our strategic goals as a district and as a school at Pine Hill and how can we make sure that the budget decisions that we're making are in the best interest of those goals and our kids? And so Dawn and I met with the town administrator last week, Jeremy Marsette. And I know that the advisory committee is still working on their guidance for us in terms of how much we can anticipate getting as a budget. Generally speaking, for years and years, it's been level service, or excuse me, level funding, not level service, level funding. So you're going to generally get the same amount of money and do what you can with it. Sherborne is always very generous in trying to match the level of service so that whatever we're providing students can continue to provide regardless of the increases. So hopefully that'll continue to be the case. But this is an opportunity for you as the school committee who oversees, you know, the work that Denny and I do with the district, to give any guidance that you have in terms of things that you want central office and Ms. Gullings to keep in mind as we build the budget. So for example, you know, whatever math support perhaps that our educators and students need, stating that we're, you know, launching a new program would be an example. Or if you want to, you know, continue to make sure that every kindergarten has an educational assistant, you know, that's certainly something you can put on the table. But if there's anything that comes to mind about things that you'd like us to include in the budget, we can, we're open to hearing it now or you can certainly circle back with Dawn or myself and let us know.
For my non-school committee member, I remember, I think, at a CSA meeting last year, Beth, you mentioned starting to look at the feasibility of modernizing Pine Hill, like making additions to Pine Hill, whether it's the air conditioning and so forth, and starting to possibly think long run about a new building. So does that fit into the budget?
So the air conditioning units, the larger units have been approved already. So this summer, in the summer of 2025, they'll be going into the auditorium, the cafeteria area, the library. And so that has already been passed through the budget. We didn't want to do it in every classroom yet because that's a huge expense and unsure of where we might be in 10 years. We didn't want to invest the taxpayer money in that. However, we are in communication with our town administrator and the select board about forming a subcommittee of a cross-section of stakeholders to come together and kind of be the steering committee for looking at Pine Hill School. And there is a lot of conversation and a lot of stakeholder buy-in that needs to come in order to make that happen. So you kind of need to go slow to go fast. So the way that we're looking at it this year is having a lot of those conversations with parents, with guardians, with taxpayers about kind of our needs and wants and wishes for Pine Hill School. And then we will submit an application to the MSBA who oversees the buildings for the state of Massachusetts with our intent to do something new and better with Pine Hill School. And should we be selected, which means that they would give us some funding towards the project, given our financial circumstances, they won't give us a lot of funding. A lot of it will have to come from within. But they certainly help, but they help us do a feasibility study once we're accepted. And it's what would happen if we renovated Pine Hill and what would happen if we built a new Pine Hill and kind of going to pros and cons. So it's very detailed and thorough in terms of looking at both options and what makes sense. So I would say recall this year, the year of conversation and prepping, and then next year, the year of applying and looking into feasibility. Because there is a price tag attached with doing a feasibility study to have a company come in and help us do that. But luckily, we're in communication with the town too, so they know this is coming.
Thank you.
The one thing that comes to mind is bus monitors. I know it's not something we may want to do for every bus, but to have the option to have funding, to be able to have a couple that potentially rotate because I feel like that issue is probably not going away anytime soon.
Thank you.
I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head of, I believe this year we had, we increased funding for the two math coaches. I would love to see that continue as I anticipated it'll take some time for people to settle in and really figure out how they teach that effectively. And even just from the Pine Hill Curriculum Night, both of my kids' teachers mentioned the appreciation of having an onsite math coach and how helpful that was. So we'd love to see that continue. And then I think this is a hot-button issue and probably one that we actually don't put funding in for, but is there anything we could do to make the burden on families who can't get into extended day less impactful? Whether that's programs that people pay for or something? I think that's something we hear every summer, either officially through our school committee emails or just in the sort of parent groups we're all in. It's a real challenge. I believe worse in Sherborne than Dover, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have increased the seats over time. And I think we're at a max in terms of how many students we can have in a safe environment after school. So looking at other options, if parents feel like they have Plan B, certainly do that. Right, well, other things come to mind, please reach out. And as you know, there's several iterations of the budget. So there'll be time to refine and critique as we go.
And I think Dawn delivers them to us by hand this year, which is kind of like Santa Claus. Looking forward to it. Thank you so much. Thank you. So we have no action items on tonight's agenda, but we have two consent items this evening. The first is to approve the meeting minutes from our September 24th meeting. Did anyone have any edits or questions? Okay. And the second is to approve the FY25 grants. Would you mind sharing a little bit about the grants?
Sure. So there's two pages in your packet. One indicates what grants we thought we would get this coming year if we projected, as we projected it last year. And then on top of that is the actual grants. And they're very close, as you can see, in terms of what we expected and what we received. So we receive grants based on our populations of special education students, of at-risk students. And then the REAP grant is based on the fact that we are considered a rural district. Dover is not, so that's interesting. Yes, we're suburban and rural together. And so those are the funding that we receive from the state. And they obviously get it from the federal government that we would use to support our students, either through educational assistance and special education programming or professional development and resources to make sure that all of our students are making progress in math and literacy. And, uh, what else? Yeah, that's about it. So this is just your opportunity to review the funding and, you know, officially approve and accept it into the budget to offset what the taxpayers provide us.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments about the FY25 grants?
Are these in line with '04 and '03? Is this the first time I'm looking at it? So just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it generally stays the same depending on the number of at-risk students we have. It sometimes goes up and down by a couple thousand dollars here and there, but there haven't been any drastic shifts over the years.
And is the low-income percentage based on the national low income or is it within our community?
It's based on families who apply for free and reduced lunch, which is why even though we have universal free breakfast and lunch, it is still important for families to complete that application because they have, it obviously affects our grants and our funding, but it also provides them access to other resources that they wouldn't have otherwise.
Oh, that's interesting. Do we think people are still applying?
Yes, there's been a big push at the school level from our counselors and our teachers and our food service to make sure that people know that the application is there and just help them support it if they need to complete it.
That's great. That's wonderful. Thank you. Okay. May I please have a motion from the Sherborne School Committee to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. May I have a second?
May I could be on a second?
Thank you, Meg. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor? Unanimous and the motion passes. Thank you so much. Within your packet, you'll see some informational items. We have the October enrollment report for Pine Hill School, the Dover School Committee meeting minutes from June 4, 2024, and the Dover Sherborne Regional School Committee minutes from September 10, 2024. Please do reach out if there are any items that you would like to see on the November meeting agenda. Always happy to include updates from any of the subcommittees that we're working with within the town. And we have come to the end of our agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. Could I have a second, please?
May I could be on a second?
Thank you. All in favor? The motion passes. The meeting is adjourned tonight at 7:19.